Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals. We're going to start our agenda off with some housekeeping items. We have some expenses that we need to cover, so we're going to ask for a motion to approve two bills. One is to the Community Advocate for the October 30th, 2023 legal notices for $314.60. Second one is to WB Mason for office applies for $21.44. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve both bills.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing. First public hearing is to hear the appeal of Nancy Castle, 11 Fifth Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass. for two variances to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 2, to allow two sheds to remain on her property line in the Shrewsbury B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor Tax Plate 31, Plot 010001. See you, Pelanin. If you wouldn't mind stepping forward. You can sit down.
Thank you.
Welcome. And if you could state your name for the record, please, and let us know what's on your mind.
Nancy Castle.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
You as well. Tell us why you're here.
So I have two sheds that I've had for, one of them has been there for five years. And then during COVID, I installed another one, just because it was COVID. But the one that matters the most to me is the one for the snow blower. So I used to try and keep my snow blower in the garage, but after, you know, the only way to do that is to move it out of the garage, put it in behind my car, lift it to skid it in sideways, you know, then trying to get it out of the garage when you've got a foot of snow. It's very difficult, and at one point, I injured my hip. So then I got the shed for the snow blower the following season. So it's been there for five years. Nobody has ever said one word about it. They've not complained. They've not complained about the second shed that houses all of my things for the lake. And, you know, is a place where I store all of, you know, the stuff from the lake over the winter. And basically, what, and this is really embarrassing, but what happened was, and why I think that this complaint has come forward, is we tried to do a good thing. We invited my daughter's best friend to come out from Oklahoma. He said he was in an abusive relationship, and being gay in Oklahoma was not an easy thing. So we invited him to come and stay with us for two to three weeks until he got a job, got his apartment, got out on his own. That did not happen. And so after a couple of weeks, he ended up telling me a story about how he got, you know, a friend of his extra time and how she wasn't welcome in. So, you know, so I had no idea that letting somebody stay on my couch for two to three weeks made them a tenant, even though there's no rent, no exchange. He was a guest. He ate my food. He drank my alcohol, and, you know, he was a guest. So when I talked to him and he mentioned that to me, I went to an attorney, and they're like, nope, Massachusetts law says you're stuck with him and you've got to evict. So rather than try and do that right away, I tried to resolve the issue amicably, tried to coach him into getting a job. He's a kid. He's 23, full grown man, sure, but kid. Mentality of a 13-year-old. So in all that time, things went downhill. He started trying to get in under our elderly handicapped, mentally handicapped neighbor's roof so that he could get another several months and get more out of her. And it turns out, we're not sure what the real story is. Was he in an abusive relationship? Was he the abuser? We have no idea. But I finally got him out on a restraining order because he tanked my system so bad that I was on the verge of suicide. So that's what happened. And so with all of the antics going on in the neighborhood over him, my neighbor complained about my sheds. And I don't blame him. I don't, because CJ was abusive to him as well, verbally one time that I saw and another time that he mentioned to me. So I don't blame Brian for being upset. But he doesn't know the whole situation. We really did try. We did everything that we could. So that's why we're here today, not because of sheds and not because of safety concerns about wooden fences.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing all that. I'm sure that that was not easy for you to share. We are the Zoning Board of Appeals, of course.
I understand. I understand. I just wanted you to know them for the real reason.
Thank you. The backstory, sure. That sometimes is important. Ms. O'Neal, any information that you can share with us?
No, I think you have all of the information, the plot plans. This afternoon, we did upload one certified plot plan from 2005, I believe, just to show the property lines between the appellant and her directed butter.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Can you speak up?
We just added a plot plan from 2005, I believe, that shows the property lines. It's stamped by a land surveyor to show.
The easement?
Not, no. We did find, you know, through conversations today, there was an easement, it looks like, from when there used to be the old homes, which were then demolished. These were rebuilt, and I believe, and I can't confirm this, it's just something we found in our files. It looks like there was an easement to a used easement area for the house for nine, but this was the old home.
It was a deck that was attached between the two houses.
So what happened with the easement, you know, that is, those are usually privately done, so, but if you do want to take a look at the stamp, this is 2011.
Which is what we have in our file here. Okay.
Well, I don't know if you have this one in your file, if you do want to take a look.
Okay, while we're looking, questions from the board. Anne?
So, good evening. I had the opportunity to take a look at some Google Earth pictures of your house and the lot, and it looks like as you're facing your house, the sheds are to the left against the fence. I'm just wondering, have you considered putting the sheds against your house to the right?
I could do that. The reason I did not do that is because of the shape of my house. It would create a little cubby there, and I was concerned about wildlife setting up home. So that was why I put it close to the shed, so that it did not, it did not create a place for nesting, because I've had that with sheds before, you know, animals get in and, you know, now you've got a skunk living in your shed, and, you know, that was why I did that. I can, if you would prefer that, but that was the reason why.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
I'll pass for one second. I'm just looking at something here. If you'd like to go ahead, David.
I had the same question as Anne about moving them against the side of the house. So outside of that, I have nothing else.
Okay.
All right. I thought I had seen, sorry, I'll come back to myself. I thought I had seen somewhere an image of exactly what you purchased, and I don't think it shows on the.
They updated, no, they updated Google about two, three months ago.
I just want to know the depth, not the width.
How deep the houses are?
Not the houses, the sheds.
Shed itself?
Oh, the sheds. Oh, they're four by six. They were the smallest possible shed I could find.
Okay. No, I share, I was going to ask the same question about Anne, about putting them up against the house. And I see what you mean about if you did try and put them long up against the house, what that concern might be. But is your current concern still that if you did rotate them kind of 90 degrees so the door is faced towards the fence that separates the two properties? Are you still concerned about animals getting in behind?
Honestly, I hadn't thought about that. I don't know if there's enough room with the air conditioner. So the air conditioner sits in the second cubby.
Right. I don't know if there's enough room in that first cubby. I mean, I would think there's probably enough room. That corner that kind of hides the cubby there is 9.7 feet.
No, they're talking about.
Okay, let's keep it to the participants in the meeting.
Sorry, this is my husband.
That's okay. And if you would like to step forward, if you're, please.
Yeah, please.
Absolutely.
Here's emotional support, that's all.
That's okay. You should be right next to her. You have the right to be there, for sure. Did you have extra info for us?
I just, I do believe a shed would need to be 10 feet from the home as well.
So.
I don't think it can be right on someone's house.
I would need a reminder. It doesn't, it's a plastic pre-built kind of thing. I know that probably still falls under our bylaws on what a permanent structure is, but even though I could see it as something that sits on the ground, you.
It's movable.
It's movable. I could see a child's playhouse being similar size, and I know it's storage of housing material, but where it's plastic and kind of more movable than something that's set on foundations or piles or something you buy at Home Depot to avoid frost heaving.
As far as movable, we literally picked it up and put it in place. So, you know, it's very light.
It's just a matter of how the zoning bylaws define a shed, which I can't remember off the top of.
Which is why I had not a clue that this would be under zoning laws, because it literally disassembles by hand.
Right. Right. I actually had the same comment. They had, I actually drove by your house, and I, there is that cubby?
Yeah.
So what you're saying is your air conditioning compressor is right there?
Yeah, well, so I'm not sure how long the second cubby is. So the house goes in just past the driveway?
Just past your garage?
Just past the driveway.
Right. And then it goes down a little ways, and then it goes in again, and the air conditioner sits in that second indent. So it's just the shape of the lot. That was the only way to.
Yeah, you have very, you only, you don't have 10 feet between, you're that narrow. Yeah, 9'8" from one corner of the back to the fence. So I had the same thoughts in looking at it, is could you just turn it and move it up against the house? That would sort of take care of all the issues that are at hand. But we do raise a good point, whether it would be regarded as a shed. I mean, I think the temporary, it looks like a temporary structure to me. So.
I don't see, I can't find permanent structure, you know, a definition right now.
She's frantically looking for the answer, and she usually has it, but it's not at her fingertips, so.
Yeah, referring to the Table 3, building and structures, but I understand, you know, whether or not it's permanent or not, but 200 square feet or less, accessory buildings such as garages, storage, sheds, carports, poolhouses, or outdoor shelters, distance from principal building, minimum 10 feet. So that's all I'm looking at. And location on the property, not in the front yard. But again, whether or not you deem this a permanent structure or this is deemed a permanent structure.
That's a question. So I guess I would ask, you know, if there were another place to relocate the shed, would you be open to doing that?
Yes. I just, I can't think of any other place to put it.
We would need to redo the landscaping.
Yeah, we could cut out the landscaping against, but then I think, no, because they'll be up against the trees.
No, actually, there's, they wouldn't be right up against the trees. They weren't there now.
Okay. That doesn't resolve the snow blower issue, though, where we can't keep the snow blower in there. So the only place they could really go would be here. So we could do one tucked in here. Again, we've got the animal problem, because it's just big enough to allow for nesting. And then we wouldn't be able to put the other one. I suppose we could get rid of all this vegetation and shrubbery and put it down there. That would potentially be an option, and it's just, you know, it's back to just enough nesting space, which is my main concern.
Mm-hmm. Is there any other comments from the board before we open it up to public discussion? Okay. So we're going to open this up to the public. Is there anybody here that wishes to be heard on this matter? Sir, please step forward to the mic, and if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure, I'm Brian Burgow. I'm at 9 Fifth Ave, directly at Butter.
Hi, Brian.
How you doing? I honestly don't have anything to say about the tenant that they had there, other than we're zoned for a single family. And I think there is a natural concern, how long that person's going to be there? He had a separate entrance. You don't know. You know, people, this castle is a landlord. She owns several properties.
I'm trying to get out of that business. Sorry.
Why? Why you need two sheds for one snow blower? Don't know. The sheds weren't there when we got there. We were told they were too small, you didn't have to, you didn't need a permit. So, you know, as a good neighbor, you try to, like, just go along with it. And then somebody came by and asked us, how did you get a permit for those sheds? Because they're literally right on top of your property. Talking about the animals, you know, I had to get spray out, spray hornets, because they started to build a nest under there. I got stung. I mean, it happens. It's not a big deal. But at the same time, when you find out, I had Patty and, I think his name is Mark or Anthony, I can't remember his name, come down from the town zoning board, building inspector, and said, well, this is an easy one. They're in violation. 10 feet. Got to be 10 feet. They go find 10 feet in the backyard, they go find 10 feet in the front yard. Can't be in the front yard, I'm sorry. But it has to be 10 feet. And, you know, to be honest with you, when you look at it, it's, I can reach out my window and touch it. It's very close, and it's right on the property. I was also surprised when I started to, because somebody I talked to, Louise, had said I should get a printout of the plot plan, which, at the time I bought the place, I had a liver disease. I was dying. And I had encephalopathy, which is where you can't concentrate as much. And so I actually went to the closing a week before I went into the hospital for a month, tried to save my liver. I had a liver transplant, then everything's fine. But, so I wasn't at the best point in my life at that point to kind of like go through technical things. I trusted my wife, my girlfriend at the time, and thought she did a great job. Again, now I go back and I start to look at it, and then when the town came in and said, oh yeah, that's definitely a violation, and I wanted to understand why, because that's very important, right? I understand the convenience, you know, one person's convenience might be another's hassle. I keep my snow blower, same thing, my car in the garage. I just push it out. I open up the, actually, I open the door first. I don't have to go outside, step in the snow, go to a, you know, a shed in the backyard or even on the side yard. I can literally start my, and I just go out and I don't have to be in the snow. The L-shaped driveway is enough for three cars. When we have a big storm, we put two cars along the L-shaped part. So I open up the door, the snow, the snow blower goes out, we get all that done, move a car over. To me, that's the convenient way. I'm much older than these two, and I do it. I mean, it's, I would, if you told me I couldn't have in my garage, I might plead hardship. The fact I have to have a separate entity outside on my neighbor's property, you know, butt up against it. And then I found out I had an easement, which I didn't realize at the time they put the fence up. So it's one of those things, all of a sudden, you start to peel the onion off, and you're going, oh, wait a minute. Now I can't even get to the easement, and on top of that, there are sheds on the easement. So all I'm asking the board to do is abide by the town rule, nothing more than that, not asking for anything special, and either relocate them to someplace on the property where they fit in the 10 to 20-foot range, depending upon where it is, or remove them. I don't think that's asking too much. My biggest concern is the safety of my wife and my house. And I used to work, my very first job was with Underwriters Laboratories. If you've ever seen combustible items be put into a shed, they have plenty of videos you can watch online. All it takes is paint, a rag, and a snow blower. And a 100-degree heat day, up goes that, and guess what happens to my house? Right up against the fence. Even 10 feet seems close, but if that's the rule, okay. And I don't think that's asking for too much. If there's one person on the board now that will say no, then I'd like to know that. If not, I'll go down the list of other items, but.
Well, I appreciate the public commentary, and we'll open up to the board for comments.
Oh, I do have the plot plan from 2016 that was signed along with the closing papers. Actually shows where the easement is and how the sheds are right on the easement.
Do you have an extra copy?
Yeah, I did. I brought one for you.
So if you bring it to us, we have to take it from you and include it in our paperwork.
Yeah, I have a couple copies.
Okay, great.
I'll be honest, I never noticed the easement.
Right.
Didn't even know it was there.
That happens.
I had no idea. Which is surprising, because it was all one property. I was the one that split it into two. There used to be two properties many years ago, and then Catherine, who was in 13, sold off half of the lot that was 11, and that is now 11. And my understanding was it was all one lot. So it was two houses on one lot at that point. And it wasn't until recently, when I was looking, I had bought a house up on the hill to get rid of the easement down through 13, which would impact me somewhat. And that's the only way that I know that that was ever two lots, because it was sold to me as one lot, and I literally had to split it. So that there's an easement on there is kind of weird.
Okay. Sir?
So one last comment I'll make. Obviously, Nancy had control of the property. She's built the houses. You build a house, she could have tore both down and built one house with three garages. She built the size of houses to make money. We bought it, we're abiding by the law. We asked nothing more than that the board support what the building inspectors came and saw. I mean, there's another couple of issues on there, but that's not on the agenda tonight that are concerns about safety. We had two fires this last year by a neighbor down the street, and one of them was just pure ignorance, just not even realizing what they were doing. We've had break-in around the corner, and as Nancy pointed out, the tenant that she had there, I had to turn my security cameras on 24/7. There were all kind of traffic coming and going. His profile and his status invited that element into our neighborhood. Very high risk. It's not what I came to that neighborhood for. And, you know, I hope everyone's learned a lesson here, but at this point, I travel a lot. I'll be in Singapore next week, week after. I need to know, if that shed goes on fire, who's going to put it out? If these people aren't even here, or they're down in their place in Florida or some other places that they live. So we're talking about safety. That's the key item here. It's got to be 10 feet from the, from the property line, then that's what it's got to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't keep any.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. That's okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Do we have the, did that make its way down to Louise? Can I have that, please? Thank you. All right. Board, want to have any discussion before a vote? Do we want to entertain a motion? How do we want to handle this? Asking for two variances, so we know what.
So if we could just talk about the hardship a little bit?
Yep.
In order to grant the variance, we need to find that there's a hardship, that the lot is too narrow, I guess is what is being put forth by the homeowner. And if it's true that the sheds cannot be located in an area that's closer than 10 feet to the home, I guess I am tending to find that there might be a hardship there, because I can't see any other place on the site that would allow the sheds to be in compliance with the zoning bylaw. But I'm happy to hear what others.
I mean, I think where I'm hung up is whether the kind of structure that we're talking about is considered a shed or not. And that would be, and that's okay. That, no, I understand. So, I mean, we could continue to get more information and bring this to our next meeting. We could bring it to a vote.
I would almost feel more comfortable about continuing and getting a better definition of it, because I'm just conflicted, because I know there's a premium for storage. It's a big item that's asked to be, being stored in a one-car garage. And at the same time, this, a lawnmower, paint materials, anything could be stored outside. And I don't, I don't know if anybody would bat an eye, but because now it's a structure which we don't have a good definition on, I don't feel comfortable 100% in deciding either way, yes or no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I concur. Because it's like, it could be a plastic shed, or it could be a snow blower underneath a tarp.
Right. But we also don't know what the standards are for exactly what makes it a structure versus a movable. I mean, to me, it looks very movable, but that's just me looking at it from, you know, your driveway, so. I certainly would be comfortable if the board decided to continue this hearing until the next month, and so we could gather more information. Okay. So can I entertain a motion, please, for a continuation of the hearing?
I'll move for a continuance.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We'll see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Next on the agenda. To hear the appeal of Kapil Langer, 16 Farmington Drive, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7B, Table 2, to build a farmer's porch on the front of their home 44 and 9 tenths feet from the front yard setback upon property located at 16 Farmington Drive in the rural B zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor Tax Plate 41, Plot 11. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor Tax Plate 41, plot 015008. Could I ask the appellant to please step forward? All right, this is a fun night. It's a rainy Monday in October, nobody's here. All right. Well, we'll put that on hold, and maybe they'll show up with Peter. Maybe there's a traffic jam on Route 9. All right, next up, um, this is to hear the appeal of Matthew Arpino, 33 Brentwood Drive, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section 6, table 1, to construct an in-law apartment upon property located at 33 Brentwood Drive in the residence A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's tax plate 34, plot 053116. Could we ask the appellant to step forward? There we go.
So, but I'm the owner, homeowner. Matthew Arpino is the contractor, does that help?
That's fine. You can step forward, represent yourself for sure.
Hi, I'm Brad Switzer.
Come on in, sit down. Oh, it looks like we have a friend here that's going to join us. Absolutely.
Part of a Boy Scouts thing is going to come to...
Wonderful. That's great. We, welcome. We're glad to have you. And, and why don't you state your name for the record?
Uh, James Switzer.
Hi, James, welcome. All right, tell us why you're here.
So, um, we're looking for a special permit. Uh, my mother-in-law passed away last summer, and we're looking to have, move in my father-in-law. And we have a nice house on a big property, and we're hoping to add a little extra space for him with his own little kitchen. So, um, we're looking for a special permit for that.
Okay. Great. And while I struggle with my, um, files, I'm going to ask the board to start questions. Anne?
Good evening. Um, I just had a few questions about the plans. Um, it looks like a really nicely located, um, in-law apartment. Is it going to be accessible by pathway? How is he, how is the exterior...
So, there's going to be two access, so one through the house, and then two is through the pool area.
Okay. And we'll, okay. Um, and is it going to be a hard skate? Not that it's relevant, but I just, I'm curious about how, from, if he's going from the driveway to the unit through, through the pool area?
Correct.
Okay.
There, there's a, there's a fence that go, that goes into the pool area, and it's a paved path all the way to what's going to be like a little deck. And we actually have pla- so currently, he's pretty mobile and active, but we have secondary plans. We built it so that we can actually build a ramp on that deck down the road if needed.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I had.
I don't have anything. If I had to guess, the reason it's coming before us is because of the front yard setback, and that's really it. It feels like everything else is, uh, within, within the setbacks. So I don't have any questions.
I think I was told that, well, I don't know, well, whatever you guys say. I, I think I was told that it just, that just, because it's an in-law apartment, it's named that, it needs a special permit.
Correct.
So. I think they told me if I, if I named it a butler's kitchen with an addition, it probably wouldn't need one.
Right. And a storage. Uh, David, questions?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't have any questions. It looks like a, like a fairly straightforward in-law apartment. Um, it's clear that that's your intended use. Uh, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. And in keeping with the craziness of this evening, I'm going to ask Louise, who was supposed to speak before all of us, to give us an idea of what we should be thinking about. But I'm going to throw it off to you. Is there anything that we're missing?
No, um, just standard, straightforward special permit for, you know, and that meets all their setbacks, so.
Sunsets with the current owner.
Correct.
Okay. You understand that. So, um, special permits for an in-law, um, would sunset with your ownership. So if you were to sell your house, you would have to have the next person, if they were going to, the intended use was to be an in-law apartment, they would have to come back in front of the board and request a special permit.
Okay.
So, um, that's just our, that's our bylaws. Um, I would just say that I applaud you on the design. I completely understand what you're trying to do, and I applaud you for doing it. And I would also say that, um, we're going to see a lot more of these, um, with the extension of families trying to cohabitate, which is a wonderful thing for young people to hear. So, um, so I don't have any more questions. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, let's have a vote, please. Can I get a motion?
I move to, uh, allow the special permit for, uh, to the section 7, table 1, to construct the in-law apartment at 33 Brentwood Drive. Sorry about that.
Great. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope you guys have a great evening. You can be an attorney for, um, for Halloween. Okay. All right, next on our agenda. Uh, this is to hear the appeal of, excuse me for mispronunciation, Resnardel Cavelo Chavero, uh, 115119 South Quincyman Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section 4B, to alert, alter a pre-existing non-conforming house upon property located at 115119 South Quincyman Ave. in the resident B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's tax plate 38, plot 123000. Please have a seat. State your name for the record, and let us know.
Resnardo Chavero.
Sorry for the mispronunciation on your name.
Madam Chairman, uh, board members, good evening. My name's Robert O'Neill. I'm the licensed land surveyor for this project. Uh, Mr. Chavero is the contractor doing the work for Victor Olivero, uh, who's with 115 South Quincyman Ave. LLC. Mr. Chavero pulled a permit to remodel an existing two-family property. He submitted the plans, received his building permit, but it just recently came to light that the second floor is an extension of an existing non-conforming use. So he's increased the habitable area, but he has not increased the overall footprint of the building. It might be helpful if I could bring up a couple of pictures of what was there previously.
You have extras. We have to keep them, that's okay.
That's quite all right.
We might already have it in our file, but let's take a look.
So this would be what was previously there, and a few pictures of what is currently there.
Yep.
So the construction of, of the, or the remodeling of the existing two-family, it has not changed the overall footprint of the, of the building, the original building with the open porch in the front of the building. If you, you can see that the existing building met all the setback requirements with the exception of the front yard setback because of the open porch. Mr. Chavero has been kind of creative on what he built, so that he, he has not encroached any further into the front yard setback, and he's left the open porch as is, with the exception of bringing the first floor forward. And I'm not sure if the board has the plan that was submitted. I could certainly bring this up as well.
We do.
Oh, you do?
All the plans, yep.
Um, do you have the previous plan that was submitted to get the building permit?
Um, if you have a copy of what you have in front of you, and you want to give it to us, we can compare it to what we have in here. Thank you. No, we don't have that, actually.
So, if you compare the two, two plans, you can see there has not been an increase in the front yard setback, nor on the side yard setbacks, um, with the way he constructed the building. He's increased the first floor, uh, floor area by about 350 square feet, and the second floor square, uh, floor square area by about 200 square feet. But if you look at the pictures, you can see he's, on the second floor, he's done full eight-foot-high wall, so the overall cubic footage has increased significantly. But it all falls within the same footprint of what was previously there. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Neill, anything you'd like to add?
So it is, um, just, you know, the special permit, um, to add to the pre-existing non-conforming house, but because, um, you know, they caught this through the building permit, that the living area has been increased. But as they said, the setbacks have not changed. I still think that there's, with the building department and planning and, and ZBA, whether or not, um, just all of the documents for the floor plans, I think, were questions that a couple of the building inspectors had, just to make sure that everything was on the same page, um, with what the ZBA is going to decide with tonight and moving forward with the building permit. So I don't know where that lands with, with the building inspector. Like, have you submitted...
Well, the last time I spoke with them, uh, they said, uh, they just got a, they said the square footage got, you know, add to the property, so you have to go for a special permit. But I do have a permit from the beginning to do the work. Right now, this house is 100% outside. We've got a brand-new driveway, parking lot. But I'm not touching anything inside to, to get this done, so we can move forward. Right now, we got a, we got a pretty much, everything inside is still open, plumbing, electrical. But exterior is 100%. There's nothing changed there. So I don't know. I think Alex, Alex was the inspector there. He's still the building inspector over there, but I think Patty is net behind too, so it doesn't matter to me. I was just trying to get the resolve. The guy purchased the property, he live on the same street, he's got a couple of properties street. He make everything looking good on the road, and he bought a property with the big land. The only chance he have it to add a couple of square foot to the property. So he's got a big lot, he can build anything on it. You can drive by, we spend a couple of amount of landscaping, look great, you know, that's who we hit tonight. To move forward the project, you know, the, actually, the houses, we pick up this design from, you know, Brookline area, so it's nice, something new to the town. And that's why I bought it, Bob O'Neill here, because he can speak the language for nonconforms. I'm just a builder. I'm not too involved in that, you know what I mean, not part, but I don't see anything should hold up the project. I don't see why that project cannot move forward.
Question, so the extra square footage is coming from where? Is it the second floor? First floor?
Both.
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 Both, for sure, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Um, which should be, I, he's in your drive. They've, originally, where the porch was originally, they've enclosed that. Uh, it was just an open-air front porch. Now that is living space, and living space above that as well now.
Got it.
Um, and I believe they're, you, you're finishing the basement, correct?
Yeah, the, actually, the basement originally was been finished. The guy has a hairdresser downstairs, it's all been finished.
Okay.
Pretty much kept the same thing. Only thing we're doing downstairs is a mechanic room, and he's going to have his small playroom, that's it. But the increase the most is, I think he increased, the way he said, 300 on the first floor, 240 on the second floor, and also we got a room above.
Right.
For like a master bath with a full bath. The, everything is in a plan, the draw by the architect, and, you know, and the arch, you know, everybody's signing off and, and send over there. You guys have all the information, so I think it probably increase over the total of 1,000 square foot.
But just to be clear, there's, seems to be competing information on what the permit was pulled for and what's actually built. Is that a fair statement? So the initial permit, um...
It's just a building permit.
Which is the building permit.
Right.
What they're seeing now built differs from the original building permit.
Um, I don't think it differs. Well...
So it was a like-for-like replacement for the building, uh, permit? And then they exceeded what they built.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, going to open it up to questions to the board. Anne?
Good evening. Um, how many units is this building going to be?
Two.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Kevin?
So then do we have all the information that we need then?
That's a good question. Keeping with the evening's proceedings, we might, we might not. I'm not laughing, I'm sorry, just forgive us. Well, let's go on to see what David has for questions, and then we're going to go back to Louise. David?
Yeah, if it was a like-for-like permit, and then it turned into an additional 1,000 square feet, um, then I would have questions for the, for, for the building department as to whether or not that is allowed within that scope, um, within that permit. So I, unless we get past that, I don't know if we can get, if I can really render any other decision.
So we're, we're sort of at a stalemate in terms of not feeling like you have enough information right now to make a decision based on...
It feels like a issue raised by the building department that has now come to us, and we don't have much information or anybody we can ask in a meeting setting.
Yep.
Because it sounds like any changes that are made will have to come before zoning, and that's why the permit's now here. So...
Madam Chairman, if I could just, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Just for some clarification, the, it's 1,000 cubic feet, not square feet, that the increase was, because it was, uh, not full eight-foot walls on the second floor. So ju- just for clarification.
Okay.
The, the second floor came, is projected out over the, a portion of what was the seven-foot wide front open porch, and also on the first floor, he captured 14 feet of that open front porch that spanned through the, the front. But none of the living space, uh, is in violation to any of the setbacks. They're all within the required setbacks. He left the open porch area so that, uh, that has not changed. It was 26.7, um, zoning, current zoning now is 30 feet. Um, it's an older building, so he, he left that alone. So his increase on, on the, uh, building itself, the living space, complies with all the zoning setbacks. It was just the fact that the building was existing non-conforming before. It requires that he applies for a special permit for an extension of a non-conforming use. So the 1,000 square feet, it's cubic feet, it's not square.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just for clarification.
Now, yeah, so Alex, I remember, when Alex required me to do a second permit, they said they're going to issue me the, the money for the first permit. I think the reason Alex told me to issue another permit, go for a second permit, because the building got involved in structural. So I got that plan for him, stamped by his construction engineer, the same architect, redraw the plan, I put into the permit system. Everything went through the system. You guys have all the information. I think that's the reason. And I also come up to this issue to come to the ZBA, because the bill is not conform. So I, I think you guys should give more information with Alex, but that's the only thing you guys have to do. Probably you guys don't have the information for him, but that's why he didn't stop the work, because I still have a building permit on site. Never say, Reece, you got to stop working. I took my own chance to stop working, to get this meter done, comply. But the reason he make me issue another permit, because they involve my more money, actually, I pay a second fee for the second permit, it was almost $2,000, and I think that's the point he stopped the, the building. We'll have the same situation, not, for the same owner, the 249 South Quincy. I applied, but later in the middle of the process, they stopped everything, so it didn't go for the ZBA zone, because the house is the same issue, it was built in 1925, you know what I mean? So I, I think you guys just got to make call, make, you know, conversation with Alex and Patty.
Right.
That should be easy to rev- resolve, you know? I just know what you, the house be sitting there right now, everything beautiful outside, you know, the guy has mortgage on it. He already lost $20,000 with the tenant, leave that for free for two years, throwing trash on, on the front of the property, so that's going to hurt us a little bit. he already lost twenty thousand dollars, the tenant leave that for free for two years, throwing trash on, on the front of the property, so that's gonna hurt us a little bit, it's gonna hurt myself too, because my name is over there. And I think that the property looked very good for the town, looked beautiful, you guys can drive by and see it, I think that should be worked out right away.
Yeah, it's, it, there's no doubt it's a lovely building, for sure, and I commend you on it, and I agree, it's, it's, really not, it's replacing a building that needed to be replaced, I think the question that I have is, and where we're lacking a little bit more information is you applied for a building permit.
Correct.
And what you built differs from that building permit.
Yeah, by the building apartment, I always have the information, I called Alex before I did it, and said, Reese, you gotta submit another plan, and I did it.
So have you obtained the second permit? Have you obtained the new permit?
No, because they still, I still have the first one.
So.
New plans that you submitted.
If I can interrupt, it sounds like we're battling two different issues here.
Yeah.
One is what we've just discussed, and the second is coming before us because there's been an increase of square footage. So, can we make a decision on the square footage increase, and the building department has their own issue of plans being different from what was submitted?
I think you can, I think, I, it would be good to have all of the same plans for the record, but that's the board's decision.
I have the plan he been submit, if you guys wanna take a look, the building apartment have it. Always stamped, they have it from the day one.
It's got the same footprint.
It's a pre-existing non-conforming, replacing a pre-existing non-conforming.
Right, we have the plot plan, because the foundation hasn't, it's changed very little, and what has changed is within.
Space on, on, on top of the open porch.
And it's not making any difference to the setbacks that are there currently.
It's not.
And if you ask, if you ask me right now, just to approve on the order to the square footage, I would be fine with it.
Yeah.
Because it's, again, it's not, it's a big lot, it's a big lot anyways.
Right.
And it's going up, it's not, it's not increasing any, anything that's out of performance right now.
Right.
So, if we're just talking about the special permit for increasing square footage, I, I have no issue continuing, and then letting the building department figure out what's going on with the plans, and then unfortunately, if you need to come back to us, then it comes back to us.
And the issue that I have is just, if it's as simple as a pre-existing non-conforming, we don't have, the setbacks haven't changed at all, to me, it's the hardship on, you know, the, the client and, or the homeowner, and how long this whole process is gonna take, that's what's in my mind.
Yeah.
So.
So, was one of the, was one of these plot plans done based on what's currently built right now?
The eleven-by-seventeen is, is.
Which I think we may.
I have another copy if it's helpful.
You may have that, if you do have a copy, I'll take it just to be sure. Because if this is what's existing now, it's what's gonna be submitted to the building department.
Correct.
Anyways.
It's actually, if, if I could.
Yeah.
He's actually submitted all the plans.
I have everything done.
Okay.
So what's out here, they actually have the plans for that?
No, I'm just trying to make sure we procedurally do things in the proper manner, yeah, these are the, this is what we have here, so assuming that this is, whoever would like to.
I've got it right here.
Look at it, then, I'm, I'm fine continuing, and, well, continuing on with.
A vote?
Taking it to a vote.
Seeing it to a vote.
I'm comfortable with that as well.
I am too, as long as the representation is that it's for two units, and that's it.
Yep.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we open the public hearing?
Uh, no, we did not, thank you, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter, please step forward. Okay, can I get a motion to close a public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to allow the special permit to section four B to alter a pre-existing non-conforming house at one fifteen, one nineteen, South Quinzigman Ave.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, thank you, so it's, you're welcome, thank you. All right. Brings to the end our public hearings for this evening, you're welcome, thank you.
Do we need to procedurally do anything with the second one, sixteen Farmington?
Oh.
Continue to the next one?
Yeah, I think we need to make a motion to continue and allow them the right to come back at a sec, so, can I get a motion to continue, please?
I move to continue to the next hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
November.
Aye.
So moved. Oh, continue to, we need to state the date of the next meeting. On November twenty-seventh.
Move, uh, to November twenty-seventh.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved. Okay, wonderful.
Do the new business.
Yes. All right, on to new business. Next on the agenda, to discuss and vote on a request for an insubstantial change for a one-year extension of the terms of the point at Hills Farm comprehensive permit from December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, to December twentieth, twenty twenty-four. It's located at five twenty-six Turnpike Road. Tell us what we're doing with this one.
This is pretty straightforward, I think the Point at Hills Farm, five twenty-six Hartford Turnpike is doing site work, they're well underway, but they're just still doing their, you know, financing and closing matters, and this is just, it, to pull a building permit, it would expire in December, and so I think they're just, want just a little bit more will, will room, but they do seem to be right on track to meet that regardless, so.
Okay, that's just for our information, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any questions?
No questions.
Do we have to take a vote on it, just discuss and vote? I would vote.
What are we voting on?
On continuing?
Approve, approve the.
One-year extension.
Or a continuation? Yeah, okay.
To, yeah, December twentieth of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, great, can I get a, a motion to continue, please?
I'm, well, move to approve, right? The insubstantial change.
Oh, yeah, the request.
I would make a motion to approve the request for insubstantial change for a one-year extension of the term of the Point at Hills Farm comprehensive permit from December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, to December twentieth, twenty twenty-four, located at five twenty-six Turnpike Road.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved, okay. All right, next up, we have an action to review and act on changes to eighteen Quail Hollow Drive decision, this is a procedural in nature, we really can't do much without it, we can take it offline between meetings for Peter to.
Or for you to sign.
And I sign in his.
Does it say clerk?
It says clerk.
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that, I got a lot of signing to do at the end of this meeting, so I'll take care of that afterwards, all right. And I, I'm gonna just remind ourselves that we're not in a public hearing right now, so this is just all new business. Next is to review and act on the updated zoning board of appeals rules and regulations.
Well, sure, I think you missed one, but I have, I'm no real update right now, I'm just waiting for counsel to just give me one last A-OK for a few tweaks we had, I know we've talked about this a couple of meetings ago, but then we should be good to go, so we'll likely see that at the next meeting for final review of the board.
Okay, and you'll get into the nuts and bolts of that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we should put some time aside for that. Okay, I apologize, I skipped right over, review and act on one forty-seven, one fifty-one, South Street. Info?
I can bring the letter up, I don't, do you have the letter in front of you to just kind of give a background on what this request was?
Not right here.
Is it just in the Google?
Apologize for a little bit.
I believe it was a request for clarification of paragraph number four, of, or condition number four.
Right. Okay, give me a second, let me just pull it up. So it was a request for a clarification on the board's decision relative to the hearing last month's hearing on the one forty-seven, one fifty-one, South Street. Condition number four read, prior to the issuance of a building permit for the conversion of an existing single-family structure into a two-family dwelling, the garage must be restored to and maintained as a garage only. So, I felt like we were pretty clear on our wording, do we have any discussions that we want to clarify?
Just wanted to make sure that my, my interpretation of my vote was that if there were a kitchen or a bathroom in the garage, that those would not be allowed to, to remain, that if there's a toilet, that the toilet needs to be removed and the plumbing capped, if there's a tub or a shower, that needs to be removed with the plum, plumbing, plumbing capped. That if there is a kitchen facility, that the counters and cabinets need to be removed, all plumbing removed, and if there's an electric stove, the wiring removed and taken back to the power box, and if there is a gas stove, that gas line be capped, so that, that was my understanding of our, our vote.
Yeah, I believe the condition came from the building and planning department at their request, so. I'm, I have no issue with what they requested, and the wording on it seems pretty clear, so I'm comfortable with the decision that we had previously made.
Yep, David?
Yeah, I agree, the condition, I think, was straightforward, the property, the garage needed to be returned to a garage only, and the the, as Anne said, the, you know, any, any toilets or kitchens or anything that was in there needed to be removed and capped, and set back to the way it was. I think it was pretty clear.
I would agree, okay, all right. Ends that discussion, let's move on to our final. This is to review and approve the dates for the twenty twenty-four zoning board meetings, of which we have in our file all of the dates on the meetings. I'd encourage you to review them against your schedules, and if you cannot make a meeting, please let us know, it'd be helpful. And I think that covers everything for this evening, so can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.